All right, welcome everyone. We are here for our special city council meeting on Tuesday, September 25, 2018. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall and we're starting our meeting today at 4:30. For the record, we do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. We do have two items for our special meeting tonight. First item is adoption of Resolution Number 7818. I'm getting into some of the details, but these are both financial policy documents that we'll be discussing tonight. And our finance director, Ms. Callaway, will be leading us in this conversation. And I can open it up for public comment for anybody who'd like to speak to any of the items on the agenda. Please come on up. Welcome Joan. Is the mic on? Hey GP, do we have a mic on for the podium please?
Lower it Joan. Lower it.
Joan, do you want to come up and just use this one right here and have a seat at the table and can we do that?
Yeah, that'll work.
Come on and sit down and join us, yeah. All right, thanks, yeah. Yeah, sit down, it's so much more comfortable. Since we don't have a podium.
Actually, these chairs are way more comfortable than the chairs out there. If you're going to do anything this year, you should get new chairs for us.
All right Joan, welcome.
Amen. All right. Okay, so, good afternoon. My name is Joan Solu, I'm a resident of Morro Bay. The staff report regarding the T-Bid Reserve is what I'm speaking to. A 20% to 25% reserve is extremely conservative financial policy. The T-Bid Reserve, if deemed necessary, should be capped at no more than 10% of the T-Bid Assessment Funds. The current $280,000 reserve is a direct result of actions that former city manager Buckingham took after the previous council vote of 5-0 to approve Resolution 0316. At that time, Mr. Buckingham neither trusted the advice of the advisory board or took any guidance from them as he enacted a financial freeze on T-Bid funds from March to July 1st of 2016. Morro Bay, as a destination went dark to the world, the results of the lockout and administration directive marketing can still be felt today with the loss of TOT revenue for July 2018 of $9,000 less than 2017, the same 30-day period. In Attachment 3, under unrestricted undesignated reserve policy, in part it quotes, "Invest in any capital improvements and equipment replacement and adds other uses on a timely basis." As you know, I have provided you with part in part of the T-Bid ordinance for its authorized uses. There are only four specific authorized uses of those funds and they do not include those listed in the staff report. In addition, the city council further went on in the Resolution 0316 to spell out that the city was going to help support tourism from the general fund. The city also states that the fund, in the city ordinance, the fund is self-sustaining in Ordinance Number 546. So, since the city agrees that the city should focus as much of a T-Bid quote assessment as possible on directly promoting and marketing, I would like to make these statements. If you feel compelled to have a reserve, you should cap it at 10% because you really only need to balance it to the end-of-year accounts payable with the city's professional tourism, professional marketing staff and the accounting support from the city, you should never be out of balance or behind in this fund. Two, if you do create a policy, you should clarify to the public and future councils what the funds can be used for and therefore, please include the language from both the ordinance and the resolution provided to you today. Three, there are no tourism department, infrastructures, emergency, or capital improvements that can be charged to the T-Bid Fund per your own ordinance and resolution. Six, or, I'm sorry, four, the fund itself is self-sustaining as stated by the city in the city ordinance. And finally, how much interest has been placed back into the T-Bid funds from the reserve over the past two years from the accumulated $280,000? Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have no more for public comment. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And with that, we can move on to the presentation and then council can get into questions and comments at that point. Ms. Callaway, if you'd like to lead us on item number one for this special meeting today, that'd be great, thank you.
Sure, thank you, and good afternoon. This is coming back to you from our August 28 discussion where we laid out a framework and timeline for bringing back a variety of fiscal policies for the city and for the council to consider. And the purpose of doing that is for transparency, so the public, the council, and staff knows where the funds are and what they're used for, helps with accountability from a staff perspective, as well as a council perspective, being accountable to the community, and then give staff guidance on where to make some recommendations and funding levels. There's two actions tonight that, one action and an opportunity to provide some feedback and comment for tonight. The first is to consider Resolution 78-18. With that resolution, you would be rescinding Resolution 33-15, which is the current general fund emergency reserve policy, adopting a new general fund emergency reserve policy as provided in the attachments, and then also adopting the internal service fund reserve policies that are also provided in the attachment. And those are policies for seven of our eight internal service funds. Notably, the risk management internal service fund is not here, and that's because that is agenda, or scheduled to be discussed November 13th as a separate item. We're still doing some benchmarking and analysis on that one, so want to make sure we bring back a pretty comprehensive review of that and a good recommendation for the council. The second item that we're asking for is feedback on both the harbor accumulation reserve fund policy and the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District Fund policy. As we were drafting the policies, we realized that there wasn't sufficient time to bring those to the boards to get feedback from them, so we thought we'd bring them to council, get any feedback you have, any changes you'd like to recommend. And then both our harbor director and tourism manager will present them to their respective boards in October, and it will likely be the second meeting in October that you'll see these come back with any suggestions from both of those boards and a resolution to adopt and approve those. So those two are a little bit backwards, but again, wanted to give you a chance to provide some feedback as long as we're talking about reserves as a whole tonight. Also wanted to kind of outline the fund balances, or perhaps I should say cash balances that we have. These are estimated because as you know, we're still closing out our 1718 year, so our interest hasn't been allocated. Some final year-end entries we're still doing. So these are kind of rough estimates, but we wanted to give you kind of a concept or an idea of what we're talking about in terms of balances. And our IT fund with about $135,000, our facilities maintenance fund about $145,000. There are four different vehicle or equipment replacement funds, if you will. The vehicle replacement fund is specific to the general fund. That one has almost $200,000 in it. Our equipment replacement, which is designated towards harbor, has about $56,000 in it. Our equipment replacement for water, $267,000. Equipment replacement for sewers, $417,000. And I would note that with respect to harbor, water, and sewer, those are all independent enterprise funds, so only harbor revenues, water revenues, and sewer revenues feed into their respective accounts, and that's why they can only be used for equipment or vehicle purchases that are related to the enterprise funds. Compensable leave, $311,000. And then our other non-internal service funds that we're discussing tonight in terms of reserve policies, our general fund emergency reserve is 3.2 million. Our T-Bid account currently has a fund balance of about $270,000, and our harbor account about $370,000. And again, there's some year-end entries that will be made, so those will fluctuate some, but to at least give you some context as to what we're talking about, wanted to make sure you had that. For the resolution that we're asking you to consider tonight, the first component of that is a new general fund emergency reserve. You'll notice that all the reserves or draft policies that are in here look the same and are kind of one format, so we thought it made sense to revise the current GFR policy, which is adopted by resolution, into that policy format to be consistent, and also revise that to be a minimum and target funding levels versus a exact dollar amount per fiscal year, which is kind of how the resolution that we currently have outlines. It gives some targets based on fiscal year and is also based on a rolling three-year average of the revenues. Staff's proposal is to do expenditures, but within that minimum and target funding level, you kind of equal out those three-year rolling averages, if that makes sense. GFOA recommends a 17% minimum. They recommend that you consider predictability of revenues, volatility of expenditures, exposure to one-time outlays, any kind of drain on other funds, impact on bond ratings and commitments and assignments. A 17% reserve level is, in my mind, fairly low, especially given the fact that we do rely on some very economically sensitive revenue sources, TOT being one of those, sales tax being another. The City of Orange did a survey on our CSMFO listserv. CSMFO is California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, 2,000 members active in there, about 300 agencies represented. We have a pretty active listserv daily that people submit questions and do surveys on for benchmarking. This was a survey done, I think, in early February, so a few months ago, but they had 17 responses to their survey on reserves in general. For the general fund reserves, the range of reserve levels went from 5% to 60%, an average of 20% was common. So staff's recommendation, taking all that into account, is to do a minimum target, or minimum funding level of 25% and a target funding level of 28%. And when we look at what our general fund emergency reserve cash balances have been over the last five years with, you know, projections through the close of fiscal year 1718, the lines don't show up all that great here, but there's a light line that would show the 28% target level. A darker blue line shows the 25% minimum funding level that's proposed, and you can see that we're generally within there. We fall a little bit below at 6:30 2018. We didn't know that as we did that prepayment for the flyer side fund. That will be, $171,000 will be reimbursed to the emergency reserve in 1819. So we expected that, and that's not a shock when we look at this graph. The next component of the resolution that we're asking you to consider is for the internal service fund reserves. The cities had eight internal service fund reserves for a few years now, I think compensated absences being the most recently formed fund a couple of years ago. There is no guidance from GFOA necessarily on policies to define funding levels, that again, that's helpful from a staff perspective in knowing what to, how to budget and kind of feed those into what departments should contribute upfront when we're doing a budget, doing our budget development. The seven here are IT, facilities, compensated absences, the vehicle and equipment replacement funds for the general fund, and the enterprise funds. And again, the risk management fund will come back separately on the 13th of November. Staff survey, we sent out a specific survey on internal service funds. We only had three responses, City of Saratoga, La Palma, and Garden Grove. The CSMFO survey from February that Orange did of the 17 responses, they had only eight cities had specific internal service fund policies. That does not mean they did not have internal service funds. That means they didn't have policies that dictated funding levels or, you know, minimum, maximum kind of fund balance reserves. I just want to clarify that. Most cities do have internal service funds, they just may not choose to hold a balance in them or define it by policy. The funding levels from the eight responses and from the three that we received varied significantly. Some funded replacement values up to 100%. Some had no recommendations and just stated that they were going to have a policy. So we took the same approach as we did with the general fund emergency reserves and the proposed harbor and tourism reserve policies, did minimum and target funding levels kind of based on our best suggestions at this point. And as we progress, we can, something weird happened here. Okay. The facilities maintenance cash balance, we have the same charts here, so you can kind of see how they feed into what our recommendations are. The cash balance currently at $144,000. Staff's recommendation for those funds is a minimum target level of 50,000, or a minimum level of 50,000 and a target level of 75,000. And those, you can see we're well within those for the maintenance piece of this. A facilities maintenance fund is not a replacement fund, it is for maintenance purposes. So carpet cleaning, if there's a heater that needs to be repaired, the larger capital projects, we would hope to be able to include those in our capital budget or have a separate in the future, maybe facilities replacement or accumulation fund for the larger capital projects. This is really maintenance efforts. Secondly, our IT fund, our balance there is about $135,000. And we've defined the minimum level of $100,000 and the maximum, or the target level of 150. When we say target, that doesn't mean we can never have above that. That would just be kind of what we, our goal would be. If it goes above that, staff would bring that forward back to council either at year end close and/or during the budget adoption process and give you an option to reallocate funds above the target levels to another, either project or another fund, pay down liabilities, or you could choose to keep it in the fund as additional safekeeping. But that would be a topic for discussion during both year end and budget process. Our compensable leave fund, this is the newest internal service fund, with about $311,000. We fund that to our maximum liability at this point, so if everybody were to separate from the city today, we could pay out all of the committed leave balances. The chances of 100% of your employees separating on the same day or in the same time period is very small, so that's probably not a necessary funding level. We're recommending 25% minimum or 33% target. And you can see based on the purple lines there that we're well above those target levels, should you choose to adopt that as a policy. The vehicle replacement fund, this is again, the general fund piece. We have about $194,000 currently in there. We're making our recommendation based on replacement value, 20% being the minimum level and 33% being the target level. Staff is currently going through the process right now of, we have a list of all vehicles, determining replacement value for those, and then determining which fund they belong to, so that we could, we don't have the bars on these graphs to show you the target and the minimum range, but once we get that process down, then we'll come back with numbers as to what that would mean. These are likely, at least the general fund one is likely underfunded, so we would bring back exact numbers for you either at first quarter or mid-year, but hopefully at first quarter. The equipment replacement fund in harbor is at $55,000, and these are just kind of graphically what we went through earlier. The water fund has about $267,000 currently, and the sewer fund has $417,000. The big drop from 1617 to 1718 in the sewer fund was the purchase of the back truck, and there was a utility truck, so that's why you see that going down. So I thought if you would like, we could stop here and just talk about the policies for the resolution and then go back into harbor and T-Bid separately since we're just getting feedback on those two.
So with that, we can start off with questions and discussion on this, and I'll look to my left. Redd, if you want to start us off?
Thank you Jennifer. This is, I like this kind of stuff. I like setting up reserve funds. Excuse me. I'm curious on the information technology, how did you choose those particular numbers, the 100,000 to 150,000? What would that be based on?
At this point, it was based on what we thought we would need. Should there be some kind of, you know, server failures or crash or something to replace components of our system? It's certainly not full value of our system. We need to go through a process similar to what we're doing with vehicles and come up with a replacement value should our IT infrastructure have some disaster related to it or significant failure. 100 to 150 is probably low once we do that, but it felt comfortable for kind of the initial setup of these policies. And as we go through and do some more evaluation, we can refine this and come back with a new funding level.
Okay, that's all I have. All right, Matt?
Yes Jen, I only have one question. In terms of looking at these funds and looking at the percentages that you recommend and what they're in there, the question is, how are they used? Are these strictly emergency replacements or are these kind of built-through-the-year evaluation and what needs to be done?
So these are kind of your saving accounts, if you will. So if, you know, if you look at it from your personal basis, if you lost your job or had some medical catastrophe, you have a set aside that you could go to and rely on for some short-term period to help you get through. That's what these are for the city. If there's an economic downturn, if there's some significant costs that are unexpected, pers, for example, we would be able to come back to the council and offer you, you would be able to dip into these reserves to fund any of those needs. Also, it's council's discretion that you can always direct that these fund levels be changed, should you want to use them for something in the future, or that you go below the minimum amounts and then it's on staff to come back and present a plan within three years to bring you up to the minimum funding levels, and that's written in each of these policies. So it's guidance at this point to help should there be shortfalls in the future.
Okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks Jen for your great report and also for the slides and the overview. I do have a few questions. To try to bring it into perspective for me, the way I understand the GFR, it is an operating balance that in theory could continue to fund the operation, the city, general fund that is, expenses for approximately a three-month period. Is that kind of the standard that most cities look at?
One quarter to six months is generally, yeah.
Three months to six months. And at the level proposed, how many months of operations could we fund if we had zero revenue?
Well, the, so the idea of 25% would be about a quarter.
About a quarter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. And then I get the dog analogy, and that was great because I appreciate it. Why do cities, or why do we, and I assume that the information technology fund are not capital items but expensed items that might be expensed annually, once they were incurred in terms of buying an item? Is that correct or not? Or could they be both?
Could be both.
Could be both, okay. So we're in the process of doing kind of a capital analysis. We approved, you know, a couple of months ago. That will inform us in the future what our capital needs might be for the city in various different disciplines. Could that potentially impact this significantly, or what are your thoughts about that at this point?
So are you, we have the facilities master plan part of the fee schedule, is that what you're?
Right, exactly, yes.
So that's going to focus more on the facilities aspect, and that could help us come back with a different funding level for that, or help us develop a guidance for a facilities replacement plan, where we start accumulating some funds to replace City Hall or do a major renovation or something like that. And at that point, we could come back and revise these when we have a better estimate of that.
So I'll just take the information technology fund. For a fund like that, a normal, I should say normal, a non-public entity might have amortization or depreciation schedule to replace equipment that is purchased that would tell one exactly when the term or life of that asset would decline and equal zero, and there might be a need to recapitalize it. Is this an attempt to do that with the city? Or how would you characterize it?
It is. This is kind of setting up some funds so we know we have them there if we need them. We're trying to go through that process of what is the value of our current system, when does it need to be replaced? Our IT manager has a good schedule for desktop computers. We need to get the servers and that kind of thing on there as well, and then assign that value, how long, what's the useful life, how much should we accumulate each year to do that?
And am I correct in assuming that excess cash accumulation above and beyond what we might consider to be threshold operational needs is not a good thing because of the alternate use of money like pay down of calpers and those kinds of things?
You want to find the sweet spot, if you will, of what's comfortable to have in case you need it in an emergency, but you don't, we're not trying to accumulate money that residents pay to the city for, you know, services. You can't provide those services or those capital needs. So it's where are you comfortable and what is that balance?
And if we did make determinations that some funds are overfunded, the alternate use of cash would then come back as a consideration for council to look at possibly lower interest rates, lower payments, paying down calpers, those kinds of things?
That's correct. And because we have so many kind of restricted funds, if you will, it's on staff, it's staff's responsibility to give you what is over, what you've established as the target level or the minimum level, but these are the parameters at which you can spend it. So if it's an enterprise fund, you know, it can only go to the enterprise funds. If it's something the enterprise funds have paid into, and that's why those schedules become very important in terms of replacement of IT for an enterprise fund or that kind of thing. So that would have to accompany that conversation. You have 200,000 you can allocate, but X amount, you know, can only go towards water, for example.
Did I hear you say the compensable leave fund was at 100% right now?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, I thought I heard that. That's interesting. And the, and the water and the sewer funds are strictly used for, again, I'll call it capital replacement on an ongoing basis, or also routine maintenance expensed items? Combination of both?
Combination, the rates every year, you know, to the extent that we don't get capital projects done or infrastructure work done, maybe that was planned, that money flows into accumulation for when it can be done. But we can't collect more than we, it costs us to run the utility.
Right.
So we're not just, you know, collecting rates to accumulate, but there's savings that naturally happens if you have vacancies throughout the year that maybe don't get filled on time. Again, you can't get to all the capital projects you had budgeted.
My last question is, with those, with the water and sewer fund specifically, accumulation at the end of the year, could that be utilized to fund part of our new project and possibly reduce rates for the rate pair?
That's correct.
With cash?
So those are, those were fund balances you approved a few months ago when we did the WIFIA loan application, and that's why they're not in here. Those accumulation funds are planned to do pay-go, if you will, for the Wharf project that will pay with cash on hand, especially since our SRF loan is a reimbursement type loan. It helps with the cash flow.
Thank you very much.
Marla?
Yes, thank you. And thank you Jen. I really appreciated the fact that you did some benchmarking, so that you gave us an idea of what other cities are doing, and I appreciated that, so thank you very much. First, let me just follow up on John's question about if we might have more money in some of these funds than we actually need. When would we be able to make a determination to perhaps move that money somewhere else?
So the first opportunity really would be at year end close. The auditors come and give a report to you, and at that point, we know the books are closed, there's not going to be any more adjustments. That typically is in early January. We would be able to give you kind of a foreshadowing, if you will, during the mid-year conversation. Well, actually, mid-year happens in February. So at first quarter, we would have some estimated year-end balances that you might be able to start thinking about things you want to do. I wouldn't recommend we do anything until we actually close the books and you have the audit. So again, January-ish. And then when we do the budget process, I think we come back to you again and remind you of what those funding levels are, where you're at, any changes you made based on year end, and any opportunities you have to reallocate at that time.
Okay. And you would come with recommendations on?
Staff would always have recommendations.
Thank you. So let me just first of all clarify what you're asking for us tonight. If we pass this resolution, are we passing this policy that is included in the staff report verbatim? So if we wish to make changes in it, should we suggest that to you today, tonight?
Yes, that would be helpful, and I have one that I forgot to mention on page 3. Yes, that would be helpful, and I have one that I forgot to mention on page three or page 17 of the packet. It's in reference to the Enterprise Equipment Replacement Funds, the minimum and target levels. They both refer to the general fund fleet, and they should say enterprise fund fleets.
So, would you repeat that now that we found the spot?
Yep, page 17.
Okay.
The first full paragraph there that reads the Enterprise Equipment Replacement Funds.
Okay.
The minimum level, target level, both refer to replacement value of the general fund fleet. It should say replacement value of the respective enterprise fund fleets.
Okay.
For both minimum level and target level, both of those sentences?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I do have some questions that relate to the policy Do you think there's sufficient language in the policy itself that explains what happens with any surplus or deficit?
In my mind, there is, but that's because I wrote it, I'm sure.
Well, there is.
So, if it's not clear to you, I'm open to any.
There is one line in here that basically any surplus at the end of the fiscal year would go into the General Fund Emergency Reserve. Is that the intention?
That would be, yes, it would automatically flow, and then when we come back with that year-end report, you would see the balance in the General Fund Emergency Reserve, and we would outline the options for you in terms of keeping it there or reallocating it. I think we also highlighted, you know, some thoughts on what those could be. Reallocate to internal service funds that aren't funded to the minimum level, pay down liabilities like CalPERS.
Right.
Other capital projects.
In fact, I, in reading this very carefully, to me, it appeared that there was a little bit of a discrepancy in what you were suggesting. And I'm looking specifically at page 11, at the last paragraph there, where you do say that if, once it's closed out, it would go into the Emergency Reserve, and then it would be distributed in the following order with the council's direction at the last choice. And then, on page, and let me see.
Can you read, can you, I know you're on page 11, but could you just?
Yeah, the bottom, the bottom paragraph where it starts out, "Anything above the target funding level in the General Fund Emergency Reserve will be..."
I'm sorry, are you on page 11 of 24?
Yes.
Okay.
At the very bottom. "Anything above the target funding level in the General Fund Emergency Reserve will be distributed in the following order." Allocated to internal service funds first to maintain, allocated to CalPERS down payment, and then finally to per council's direction to, during the mid-year budget update. And then later on that page, at the very bottom of that page, it says, "The council has the flexibility to direct staff to utilize those available funds to fund really whatever we choose." And I'm just wondering if that isn't really what the council's authority is, is to really, when there is an excess in the reserve, we could choose to allocate it wherever we want it, I'm assuming. Is that correct or not correct?
That would be correct. I think I was attempting to give you kind of some priority options here, like staff would always come back and say, "You have X amount," shouldn't say staff would always, but likely come back and say, "You have 200,000 in excess of your target level in the General Fund Emergency Reserve. You don't have, you're not meeting your minimum in the compensated absences reserve." So, you, that would probably be our first recommendation, is to fund that to your minimum. I think if we change the wording, if council's comfortable with that concept, may be distributed to any.
Yeah, I think it's the will.
Yeah.
The will be distributed, sounds like you have taken away.
Automatic.
The council's authority to decide on the funding. And we certainly wouldn't want to do that to future councils and all other councils. So, I think I would be comfortable actually striking that, that, I don't want to get into discussion, these are questions, but I just wanted to, you were aware of that discrepancy?
Well, I can see where it's confusing, perhaps how it was working in my mind and how I wrote it didn't translate.
Yeah.
I do think we could change it to.
We could clarify.
"Anything above target funding level in the General Fund Emergency Reserve may be distributed to any of the following." And then, the last one was meant to be anything else council chose.
Right. So, can you also explain the actions that the council takes at the mid-level review with respect to allocating funds differently than in the, in our budget if we happen to have a surplus?
Right. So, if during the mid-year update, we do budget adjustments, we do both revenue and expenditure adjustments. So, should sales tax be trending significantly high for some reason?
Right.
TOT, we would have the, we would increase those based on whatever the expenditure adjustments would be. Would know if you were likely going to have funds available during the current fiscal year. More likely, we would point to excess revenues over expenditures from the prior fiscal year and give you options to allocate those at that time. And that's similar to what we did this year, based on the way the revenues were trending. The city manager chose not to fill the deputy city manager position, and those were recommendations that staff brought back.
Okay. And then, are we looking at all of the internal funds here? Or are there other ones that we actually have where we have money set aside for another purpose?
You're looking at all of them except for risk management.
All except for risk management. So, because I know that when Mr. Buckingham was city manager, he did set up a number of internal funds, and I just wanted to know that we have, we're looking at all of them?
Yeah, so let me clarify that a little bit. These are, these are funds that are truly meant to be internal service funds, meaning that other, the departments pay into these funds to fund IT services, to fund facilities needs. There were funds set up for capital improvement, there was a special projects fund, and we talked about those during the budget process. We're working on kind of clearing those out. I think you allocated some funds, the council chose to allocate funds for City Park from one of those, and that was one of the funding sources potentially for Surf Street. So, we will bring those back to you under a separate, they aren't considered true internal service funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just, we're going to go into final discussion and clarification on any of the changes that we want, might want to get into. And I might be repetitive, but I just want to go over the one point I think Marla was speaking to. When we look at this slide, well, I think it's slide number, on page number five of our handout, so maybe slide nine and 10, which are the internal service funds for the IT fund balance. Yeah, that one's great. And so, I think the question is, we have minimum and target levels, and some of the funds, at least for the IT, we're showing for fiscal year 2018, that were less than our, actually, we're in our target, but our minimum, but not our target, correct?
Correct.
So, is, through this policy, as long we're in that we're, we are accepting the minimum level?
Correct.
Year in, year out?
This wouldn't invoke any action necessarily.
Okay. And so, in the facilities maintenance, we're at 144,000, so we're well in excess of that minimum and target.
That's correct. So, when we, in the facilities maintenance case, we would come back and highlight that, and then also highlight what we've programmed or budgeted for 1819, so you would know what you're expecting to come out. The uniqueness about that one is the primary revenue source at this point has been rental income. So, the departments haven't been feeding into this fund or paying for necessarily. So, the old, the Market Street property, that was DiStazio's, that rental income was what funded the facilities maintenance fund.
Right.
So, we know we have that no longer coming in, or a much reduced rate coming in. So, that would have to be part of that conversation, is we would highlight, we're above the target, however, our revenue situation has changed.
Right. So, particularly on the facilities maintenance, we're, to your point, we were using revenue from DiStazio's rent to fund this. So, if we want to fund our facilities maintenance in that annual way, that just basically means that our general fund, we just, we're going to be budgeting that annual amount.
Typically, how I've seen them work is departments contribute based on essentially a square footage. They use X number of square feet.
Yeah.
So, you, you know, contribute this much towards the fund.
Okay. And so, I guess the point is that, basically, we have some balancing to do with all these internal service funds.
That's correct.
And it would come back from a recommendation to you on, hey, we're going to be shifting these around, and we're going to be hitting our target levels, and that would come back from a recommendation for you.
This would set that policy, so when we do year-end in January, we would be using these thresholds to do that balancing.
And the compensable leave portion set down in the 100,000 range?
And that's just based on our 33-ish percent of what our liability is. Figuring, you know, a quarter to a third of your employees are likely not going to walk out on the same day, but that's still a comfortable level.
And there's obviously room for discussion on whether or not we, how, where we want to put any of these target levels.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I think those are, those covered my questions. And if you want, is there anything more you want to cover on this, or are you okay with getting in discussion on the policies themselves?
Sure.
Okay. I'll start the same direction. If Red, you want to lead us off in discussion on the policy documents?
I don't have any reason to disagree with the recommendations from our finance department, so I'm okay, considering the changes that Marla made.
Okay, Matt?
I agree with Red. John and Marla made some really nice, impertinent suggestions. Jen, in terms of scheduling, in terms of what you need from us tonight and moving forward with this, from this timeline now in September, and then so between now and January, would these would all be kind of settled, or, and how would that, would that be coming back to the councils at different meetings, or?
Yep, so with, if you adopt the resolution tonight, this would become policy. Again, as we close out the fiscal year and get our year-end balances finalized, this would, that would be what we come back with and then highlight, these are the minimum and targets that the council adopted in September, and this is where you're at, so these are your options.
And then likewise, and I'm sorry I'm questioning, because I think it's part of a discussion too, in terms of what was brought up, in terms of adjusting those amounts and what we recommend tonight, and then bringing it back, when and, how and when would those extra funds be dispersed or reallocated?
And it would be during that year-end conversation, so January timeframe.
Okay, got it. Okay, great. John?
Thank you. So, I'll just go fund by fund. General reserve fund, our current, I forgot to ask you, our current is 27.5? Is that correct?
Correct. And then, there's some other levels, assuming that there, I believe it was intended that if there was a recession, it gave target levels by fiscal year.
Yeah, so I'd be, I'd support 28% your recommendation, as a range of 25 to 28. I'd support 28. I'm comfortable personally with your recommendations for the internal service fund, the facilities maintenance fund, the compensable leave fund, the vehicle replacement fund, the equipment harbor cash balance, replacement cash balance, and the water and sewer fund recommendations. I agree with Marla's. I would like to see any excess cash come back to council with recommendations from staff for reallocation to a higher and better level, retirement of debt or what have you, and strike the verbiage that she mentioned, and just automatically have it come back with staff, recommendations for our approval. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry I spoke out of turn earlier. I got on a roll there. I really do appreciate having, the way you've structured this. I have to say that, first of all, having a minimum and then a target, which gives us some flexibility and some time to achieve the target level. And so, I will just reiterate, removing that specific language that appears, I think it's on page 11, and I wouldn't even, my problem with it is that we don't know what's going to happen in the future, and I think that both the council and the staff needs flexibility in what we do with any excess or surplus funds. And rather than limiting it, it may not be that in the future, this is the way we want to spend the money, and I trust staff to make a recommendation and council to make that decision, so I wouldn't presuppose how we're going to spend it. That happens to be priorities right now, but it may not be, and a policy is going to last for a while, so I would just rather, so if we can do that here, that would be my preference.
So, just so I'm clear, we would be striking at, starting with anything above the target funding all the way through number three? And that whole sentence, number one, number two, and number three?
Yes.
That's what I was supporting as well, yeah.
And maybe adding a line about, a recommendation would come to council to make a decision on what to do with the, anything over and above the target amount, or?
So, I just want to get clarification on language for that, so I can understand it, and then I, I just want to see where we're at.
Okay.
So, on page 11, we're saying at the end of that, the sentence that goes, "Anything above the target funding level in the General Fund Emergency Reserve will be distributed in the following order." Your request is to strike one, two, and three, and basically add a line in there, say, bring it back to council for their own distribution.
With the staff recommendation, yeah.
With staff recommendation, and that would.
On how to allocate the money, yes.
Okay. And that would come at the end of the year?
Well, I think that's a discussion.
Yeah.
Midterm, end of the year, or both?
So, I guess I have a question for you on that, Jen. Reading through this, with our policies that, first of all, I just want to make a comment, these policies are great.
Yes.
You know, I can't tell you how excited I was when I, when I saw that, and I said that to you earlier, actually, yesterday, I think it was, when we met and went over these things. And I'll just make a couple of brief statements on this, because, you know, I'll just reference a six-year timeline for me, and when we first, when I first went through these budgets, there's a lot to learn through, and each year, we've been able to grow that. We were able to implement some of the resolutions that were actual policy, implement that into the budget document, which is very helpful if you have a particular fund and it references a policy, yet it's not in, in the budget document. So, we've been, you know, year by year, we've been going through that, and I just will also mention the General Fund Emergency Reserve, realistically, we've had a resolution that just clearly states what the number is for our general fund. We haven't had a policy that has a policy statement, a purpose, in all the language that's in here. So, I'm speaking to this for our viewing audience as well, because it's really, really important that we understand that now that we have these documents, as, you know, any actions from council, or as we're, you know, city staff yourself comes with recommendations for us, we have really good guiding documents here on how we're allocating funds and managing fund reserves. That said, we've not had an internal service fund reserve policy before, so if I'm looking at this correctly, we're establishing a policy for our General Fund Emergency Reserve, and I agree with the targets as proposed. In essence, we're actually setting a higher level of reserve because we're siloing some of these other funds and creating reserves for those specific funds. So, if we didn't do that, and we said, hmm, to cover ourselves, why don't we make a General Fund Emergency Reserve at 30%? In essence, I think that would, that would cover it, and then it would come back to council, and we would distribute appropriately. I appreciate the way it is here, and I think to some extent, the siloing is more transparent. I can go either way on this, because I'm really excited about having these policies. Personally, I see it, having it, having it itemized the way it is, if we're going to have internal service fund reserves and we have minimum and target, it's have internal service fund reserves, and we have minimum and target, it seems logical that we would maintain that balance, and that would be the first order of business. And then it would go as recommended. You know, for, past that, it says go to a CalPERS paydown, and then it says allocate per council direction. Like I say, I'm inclined to go either way, but I, actually, the internal service fund has the first order of business to pay down. To me, that makes sense. If it, if we don't do that, we, it doesn't make sense that we would even have the reserve if we're not going to maintain that. So for my colleagues in conversation, it makes sense that we just leave that there, and from, and coming back, it just comes back to council. Having the allocated to CalPERS paydown up to 50% in this policy, I like that in there, but the reason I could see not having it in there is because when we get into more detail in our fiscal emergency plan, that would be some more of the driving document. Does that seem more realistic, Jen?
Yeah, I can see where, you know, hearing the comments and reading it again, it's, it's kind of confusing. We could do an even more general statement that we'll bring back to council recommendations, you know, and something like, starting with probably an allocation to internal service funds, or something more generic, but still gives a framework for staff to provide those recommendations. Again, that does kind of tie you to that, so in the future, you know, the CalPERS may not be an issue, and, well, won't be an issue hopefully in 10 or 20 years from now.
Yeah.
So, but then again, you're likely to have revised this before then as well. So it really thinks-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
We're likely to make revisions to this over the course of, you know, 10 or 20 years. This isn't going to be your policy.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
It's never a bad thing to be cautiously vague, coming back with council direction. My recommendation is always going to be, keep your internal service funds at the minimum. That's why you establish those.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Council can choose to do that or not, but that would be my recommendation. It doesn't need to be in the policy for me to come forward with that.
Mr. Mayor, could I add one point to, to your point, which I appreciate you bringing up? I just want to say that in, in four audits that I've been through, the material weakness in the management letter that has been stated year after year is the absence of standard operating procedures and purchase order system, et cetera. And this is the first finance director that has addressed this and is, is bringing back salient policies that help ensure the financial viability of the organization. So I, I've harped on this for three years, and I am grateful that we are addressing those issues, and I thank you so much for that.
Yeah.
So I, I just want to finish my comments first, just to make sure, because I think part of the, the discussion we have is largely on page 11 and how we craft the language for that. So unless we come up with specific language tonight that we agree to, we would be asking you to do that, and then bring it back on consent, and then we would accept it at that point, or we would start having discussion on what the exact language is, which I always think is somewhat awkward when we, when we have to do that.
Well, perhaps we could bring this back, I could go back, refine it based on the feedback, and bring it back as part of the adopting resolution for harbor and the T-bid policy.
That'd be perfect, yeah. Everybody okay with that? Okay, all right. So we're going to, so based on comments, it's page 11 of 24, and the language is there that we're going to work on, and that'll come back at our harbor discussion.
Correct.
Okay. And the only other comment I have, as far as the internal service fund, I would, I agree with all of them, with the exception of the compensable leave. To me, I think, and I, I don't really have a lot to substantiate this, but from a comfort level, 150 sounds more adequate to me. And I'm sorry, I don't have a great, a good, because, a good argument for council on that, but I mean, I, and at some point, we're selecting an arbitrary number, because I think what you were saying is the minimum target is 100. Is that right?
I think we said 25%.
Twenty, so what page are you on?
We use percentages for-
I was just coming by the-
The range was 25 to 33, which would be 75,000 to a little over 100,000?
Yeah.
Or right around 100,000.
Yeah. And I guess the, the number itself just seemed a little bit low, so increasing the range somewhat, and like I say, I, it's a comfort thing instinctively. I don't really have anything to substantiate why I would want it to go to, let's say, 45%.
Well, you're right, because compensated absences are based on employees, so longer-term employees tend to have higher balances.
Yeah.
If a, you know, 20-year employee were to retire or separate from the city, they're apt to have a very large payout. And then what that means is the following year, we owe that fund quite a bit of money to catch up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that would be the reason to increase it.
Yeah.
If, if there's not comfort level with the dollar amounts.
Could you come back with a, a different number when we do the language as well, for us to just have a final discussion on? Would that be adequate for council?
If you, if you want to state a number now, I don't know that she needs to come back.
Yeah.
If you're more comfortable with 40%, let's say, which would be 120K, maybe you could state that. And my issue is the alternative use of cash. If cash is available and just sitting in a fund and unused is 0% return, I know there's risk associated with it, but it's a risk benefit analysis, and a CalPERS side fund payoff of $200,000 could significantly reduce liability.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I-
I would agree, and I think we've had some payouts in the, in the compensable leave that has, it's been beneficial for us to have that, as far as balancing things. And, you know, arbitrarily, I think, you know, bumping up to 40% would provide a little bit more comfort if, if folks are agreeable to that. Are you, okay.
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't have a better argument, I was just kind of going off comfort level on that.
Well, I could interject, Jamie. When we had talked about, especially when we looked at our 10-year forecast, looking at 2018 to 2020 in terms of the financial possibilities, that's one hand. But then when we started looking at the CalPERS unfunded liabilities, and I think, I'd like to hear, especially coming back, Jen, some different fund concepts, if it is 40%, if it is 50%. I agree with you, John, in terms of that money not making any money. However, I'm still really leery and a little bit uncertain, especially given CalPERS, if we do have a number of people with more years leaving, and they take a bigger chunk of that money, I would hate to, you know, kind of hurt us that way. So I wouldn't, I, if that makes sense, I think that's where we're going with this. So if you could come back with another percentage that you think-
That would be the pension liability fund, though. This is, this is sick days.
No, and, yes, no, I'm with you. Because those people, when they take that, they're going to take, they could, longer-term employees, could take a big chunk of that.
Okay, so we're bouncing around here, coming back at 5:30 to get to this, and I was just trying to keep us on. So we're okay on page 11 of that document with the language coming back, and then we'll, we're going to entertain the 40% on the compensable leave, but all the other ones, we're good on for the minimums and targets? Okay? And that'll come back to us for one final brush? Okay?
I'm good.
All right, we're good at that? We've got consensus, look into my left and look into my right, we're all good? Okay. And then that concludes the item number one, and then we're on to item number two?
Do you need a motion for that, or is that?
So we still have the harbor fund to talk about, and the T-bid fund for item one?
Okay, all right.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion, council member heading. I'll take that direction and come back with revisions for you to adopt at the, in October. The harbor accumulation fund, we're recommending a 15 to 25% reserve fund policy for ongoing operating expenditures, so that would take out any anomalies or one-time, you know, capital needs that the department may need. Again, we're just looking for feedback and comment from you, and then our harbor director will put this on his agenda for his next harbor advisory board meeting, and get comment from the board on that. The harbor fund has not had a reserve policy. Again, we adopted reserve policies for water and sewer a few months ago. It makes sense for them to have a reserve policy. Their primary revenue source is also very economically sensitive, since it's based on the sales down on the Embarcadero. So to have a set aside in case those start to slow down, that the department can draw from, if our needs would make sense. And that's why we developed this. Again, it looks exactly the same as the others, and follows that same format for consistency Again, we're, we'll be falling a little bit short of what the minimum and target levels are. The policy allows for a three-year kind of plan that we would bring back to you. That would come back again at year end, when we have that number refined. And the director, and I, and city manager would work together on what that plan is, to kind of bring that up to that minimum funding level at least. So that would be what you could expect about January-ish for the harbor fund. Also, again, in thinking about our funds, the tourism fund had some cash balance when the city took it over in 2016. That naturally happens with a lot of our funds, as, you know, some years you don't expend as much as you expect to, for a variety of different reasons. So they had excess revenues over expenditures that started to accumulate into this reserve fund. I think during the 17, 18 budget, there was actually a programmed transfer of some excess revenues that weren't budgeted, maybe about $30,000, if I'm remembering correctly, that was intended to go to an accumulation fund. There isn't currently an accumulation fund set up for the tourism board, so we'd set up a separate accumulation fund for them, transfer the current fund balance and the existing fund to that accumulation fund, so it would be there for them. This fund would only be able to be used for tourism. There is that language in there about capital projects, that really comes from the thought that should that, should the dockside boat, for example, be wanting, tourism want to use that as a visitor center, or some kind of tourist office of some sort, or it was deemed appropriate by the board to have a capital expenditure like that, this could be a possible source to go to, especially if it's above the target levels, that could be an option. The intent with, I believe, our intent for both harbor and tourism would be any use of money in the reserve would go to the board for recommendation to council, much how our CFA committee works. So if that's not clear, we can incorporate language in there on that. This is a restricted fund, in the sense that you have an ordinance and policy, so it can only be used for tourism. The variety of tourist-related activities could range, though, so, and again, it's an economically sensitive revenue source, so should the economy turn, should we see our less TOT coming in, it'd be in the city's best interest to remain active in the tourist world in terms of promoting Moro Bay, and that would be in, you know, a funding source or rainy day fund, if you will, for that. So again, just looking for feedback on these two comments, and we'll share them with the board, and come back with a resolution to adopt, and provide the council with the feedback we receive from both boards.
Okay, questions for this portion? Red, I'm just going to go, go to you to start tonight.
I don't have any questions.
All right, good. Matt? No? Anybody questions? John, Marla?
So our, our general fund $150,000 contribution basically kind of gets parked, or maybe, I'm just using that as an example, in the accumulation fund. And these do not draw interest, am I correct? They're, they're just setting funds, or are they part of a pool?
Interest is allocated to, to the funds.
Okay.
And I knew that was a question I could pull up, I don't have the interest for the tourism fund, what was allocated, but we, we do allocate interest to, you know, the enterprise funds at year end.
Okay. And, all right. And this again is separate from a capital reinfusion program that I think both the mayor and I have talked about in, in the past, so, okay.
Yeah, I, I think my only question has to do with why the harbor accumulation fund would be 15 to 25%, and the T-bid 20 to 25%? Was there a rationale for those differences?
Our, really 20 to 25%, again, it gets to the running for about three months or one quarter, should there be a significant economic downturn? And that gives you, the council and staff, time to come up with a longer-term plan, as you know, should we need to dip into these reserve funds? We were trying to come up with a policy for harbor that was achievable. You know, harbor has some limited revenues coming in, so a 15% I think is a good starting point for that fund. Once we have a plan to keep that fund in that kind of target minimum range, then we can adjust those if we think it's necessary. But we don't want these to be so far outside of the world of, you know, achievable, that it doesn't make sense either, so.
And would you be able to address some of Mrs. Solo's comments about this seems too high, and it doesn't seem to be consistent with the resolution that established the T-bid?
Yeah, the 20 to 25% is, that's the threshold, again, thinking should TOT start to significantly fall off, we would have, you know, a quarter to six months' worth of money that we could continue to promote Moro Bay or do tourism outreach. So that was the reasoning for that. I tend to be conservative, so I'm sure some people do think, you know, a lower threshold is appropriate. My thought is to get the city by for several months while we come up with a long-term plan. In terms of meeting the, the resolution, or the ordinance for this, this is generally, you know, it's restricted money, can only be used for tourism. So if that's not clear, when we present this to the board, we can do some edits to make sure that's very clear, that it's only tourism-related. I could conceivably see some capital stuff that the tourism board would deem appropriate if it, if it does promote the city, maybe not, and we can propose that in discussion with the board during the conversation, and bring back their thoughts to the council. It'll likely be the second meeting in October, given the timing of when the tourism board meets.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions. I agree with some of the comments as far as, these are going to be forwarded on to harbor and T-bid board, and we'd get some feedback on the 20 to 25% versus 10% as Ms. Solo discussed, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Any other further discussions? Red, Matt?
And I'll just reiterate the point that was made, that, that that allows us to continue to market the city in an economic downturn, which is part of the essentials of what Mrs. Solo was talking about with regard to the intent of the funds. Thanks.
Right.
Okay. All right, good. All right, Jen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we can do this one quickly.
Yep, we're, we're good, and we're moving on to item two.
Okay, thank you.
And Jen, I know we, you know, we, I'm going to try to stop us at around 10 till, just to give us a little breather in between the regular meeting, so if I speak up, just so you, so you know, and we'll do our best to help as well.
Okay, fair enough. Again, this came out of, I don't have a presentation for this, so I'm just going to talk briefly, and hopefully get some feedback from you. This came out of the August discussion as well, where we prioritized development of a fiscal emergency plan as part of an overall resiliency plan. The staff met with the budget advisory group, we came up with the five proposed triggers that would stimulate action under the emergency plan, those five being natural disaster, human-caused disaster, state takeaways of local revenues, and an economic downturn. We defined economic downturn as two consecutive quarters of declining revenues, and the major revenue sources, we linked those to the MOUs that provide for COLA increases, that seemed to make sense to us. Those are sales tax, TOT, transit occupancy tax, and property tax. Those revenue sources are not consistent throughout the year, we all know that, they don't come in 1/12 throughout the year. So we would, what our plan would be is if we do the quarterly budget updates, if we are behind in one quarter, we would note that to the council, and then have to report back in the second quarter if, if we're still behind. We shared these with our citizen finance committee as well in September, earlier this month, last week, and got some feedback from them. They suggested that we clarify that this is not intended to declare a fiscal emergency, and that is not the intent. This truly is an action plan for short-term response, immediate response, so we can add some clarifying language into the document when it's finalized. They also wanted to clarify, or recommended including kind of parameters for what is a, a large-scale response versus a small, like a catastrophic expense. There could be a small natural disaster that wouldn't trigger the plan, so we could put some parameters in there for that. And also, when the city manager should, if and when the city manager should bring back action under this plan, is this something- Is this something that he is automatically authorized to take action under, or is it to stimulate, you know, agendizing this on the next council meeting? Should there be a trigger that's meant for council discussion, and maybe the city manager's recommendation as to mitigation measures to implement? So that was quick, fast, but hopefully get some feedback if you are in agreement with what these trigger, these five triggers, if you think there should be something else, or some of them should be removed. We'd like to get that now as we work towards finalizing the plan.
Thanks, Jen. Question, let's just go questions and comments to get through this, if that's okay, and we'll start with Red.
Thank you. The fourth bullet parameters for when the city manager may need to respond immediately, I guess I would like to know examples of that, because I'm uneasy about what kind of situations may arise, and what kind of actions might be taken under heat of intense pressure, where the city manager feels as if immediate action is required without taking the time to consult with council.
So the idea in the next phase of this would be to come back with mitigation measures, and those would be agreed on. Should there be some natural disaster, for example, that maybe is not a, you know, $2 million natural disaster, maybe, and what that threshold is, we have yet to define. But the concept would be, development and approval of this plan would give the city manager some authority to say, I've enacted this mitigation measure. Maybe it's a hiring freeze. We have a concern coming up, we're not going to hire right now, I'm going to implement that. It would come back to council at some point, you know, the next council meeting, but there might not be a chance to schedule one before he wants to make that decision. Again, the council has agreed on what those mitigation measures are, so it's not a shock. It's, you know, out there that we've agreed that this is okay to do. In most circumstances, particularly economic downturn, if we have two consecutive quarters of declining revenue, that's discussed at a council meeting, and then it's our obligation to say, these are the mitigation measures, we recommend these, and council would go forward or make a recommendation at that point and provide direction. I don't think there's many instances where there wouldn't be an opportunity for council discussion, but there may be some, and we would, we could try to define those.
Okay, and I would look forward to hearing some sort of definition, because I guess by definition, an emergency is hard to define, you know, so.
It's a challenge.
And I guess that leads into the one question I have, Jen, looking at these points, in terms of timing, is this, these triggers that then with the city manager would be dealing with, as finance director, are these triggers that you would be bringing to notice, and are they every quarter, or these immediate responses? And I guess that kind of goes to what Red is saying in terms of, what is the timing of emergencies? But what is the timing, if you could, or maybe it's still very vague and ambiguous, when these responses would come?
It's a little bit vague, but let's use the example of large, or state takeaways. The best example I can think of that would have been the dissolution of redevelopment. So the city of Morro Bay didn't have redevelopment, it didn't impact us, there was notice coming that dissolution was going to happen. There was a, you know, defined process in that, and cities that relied on redevelopment lost millions and millions of dollars from the state. Under that case scenario, should it have impacted the city? We want the employees and the council and community to know that there's some agreed-upon actions that we'd likely take. And a hiring freeze, you know, comes to mind immediately. That doesn't mean layoffs, that just means hiring freeze. The city manager would have authority to say, we're not going to hire at this point, we're going to bring this back to council and discuss the full, long-term implications of those kind of takeaways, and I'll acknowledge that I've implemented a hiring freeze. Council can direct otherwise at that point. But it gives him some immediate response that he can do to acknowledge, you know, actions like that. So it is hard to define, and it's hard to put that into word, so somehow we're going to have to try to do that.
Okay, John?
No questions, just comments?
Yeah, the only question I had, Jen answered for me, and that was, did all, and it had to do with the economic downturn, and whether all of the indicators had to be going down, or, and she suggested it was the average, so I just think we could, just for edification, that was the response, so, and I appreciated that, just to know. So that was my only question.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Comment, I think as far as any emergency, we do have, if there's an emergency, city emergency, we have emergency plans that direct us in how, if there's funding requirements, and how the city council will convene to make, to take action for an emergency. And I think there are some parameters that are more clear, but that would be a more natural disaster emergency, and it's pretty well-defined. I'm comfortable with what's laid out, and appreciate, Red, your comments on some of the, some more information examples. Other than that, do we need any more comments on that, Jen?
Not an action item, we're just looking for feedback, so I think I have.
Okay. John, yeah, John, comments?
My comment is that we need to empower the city manager and the finance director to move quickly in fiscal emergencies, and I think that this does this. I'm aware of San Luis Obispo's policy, and they've enacted it in the last year, or year and a half, with the CalPERS emergency, and with the caveat that it's reported to council for consideration, I'm very comfortable. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I appreciated what CFAC suggested, and think that the policy should actually take into account their comments.
Thanks, Marlos. Yep. And thanks, CFAC. Jen, how are we doing?
I think we're good.
Okay. So with that, we can, we've got everybody's comments, I just want to check everybody's comments at this point. Okay, with that, we can adjourn our special meeting, and we'll reconvene our regular city council meeting in a few minutes. Thanks very much.